Thank you, Matthew. Good morning supervisors. Good morning, community. Alvaro, if I can have my slides, please. I'll start with an update on our numbers currently, and then review some of our priority strategies for this coming week. Next, please. This is a graph that shows our total number of cases in Marin County since the beginning of the pandemic. We continue to revise the way that we're describing our data, and this is slightly different than what I've shared with you in the past, and that we are breaking down total hospitalizations and total deaths separately. Previously, they had been included on that same top line graph, but because we have so many more cases than we do hospitalizations and deaths, the difference was obscured because the line looked almost essentially flat at the bottom of that top graph. So we've broken them down now where you can see total hospitalizations deaths reflected separately with a different axis, and you can see there that we've had 166 hospitalizations total and 99 deaths in Marin County since the beginning of the pandemic. And these are what I'm sharing are visible to the community at coronavirus.marinhhs.org. These are screenshots of our dashboard. Next, please. This is our EpiCurve. This shows the total number of cases we've had since the beginning by day, by test date, and what you can see there is we have a very clear spike in cases in mid-July that corresponded to our highest burden. I think during our highest week there, we had over 500 cases in a given week. Now we're seeing less than 100 cases per week, and we're in a relatively stable mode now. If you look on the right side there for over the past month of a similar incidence of about 100 cases a week. Next, please. This is the total hospitalizations in Marin County over time. We've had less than 10 in the hospital again for the past month or so. Right now, we have nine in the hospital and two into an ICU. We do expect to see some random fluctuation within that. What we're really looking for in any of these metrics is sustained trends. Next, please. This is the hospitalization rate across the Bay Area per capita, showing that Marin County has the second lowest hospitalization rate of any Bay Area county. Another sign of our progress. Next, please. Now I'm going to talk about our tier status. As you know, the governor has now instituted the California Blueprint for a Safer Economy, and that establishes every single county across the state into one of four tiers according to the number of new cases and the percent positivity. And then another indicator on how well they're performing regarding equity in terms of percent positivity for the lowest income communities. We are currently in the red tier. We are in our fifth week in the red tier. Each week on Tuesday around noon, the governor announces the new tier status for every county, and we have been in red, and we are projected now based on the numbers we've had this week and the numbers that were announced last night to be moving, at least for this week, into orange. Next, please. And this just reflects our current status as having between four and seven cases per 100,000 residents on average per day. And a case positivity actually is for us is lower. It's about 1.8%. Next, please. These are the specific indicators from Marin that correspond to the metrics that they're looking at at the state. What it shows is that we have, on the upper left, there are significantly higher testing rates than the rest of the state. If you remember back when we were first trying to increase our testing rates in an environment of extremely limited supply of testing reagents and supplies, our goal had been 500 tests countywide per day. What this shows is that we're actually doing just over 400 tests per 100,000 residents per day, which is about 1,000 tests per day. So I'm looking back and thinking about what a different environment that was for us back when we were struggling to even achieve that role of 500 tests, when now we are more comfortably testing 1,000 residents daily. And that's been an important factor in our success reducing case rates. If you look at the right up there, you see that our adjusted case rate has declined from closer to the purple tier through the red tier, and now it's just emerging into that orange tier, which looks more yellow on this graph, but that's the orange. And then on the lower left, our overall percent positivity is now actually down past the orange and into the corresponds to the yellow tier, about 1.8% positivity overall. And then on the lower right is that additional metric that was just added by the state a couple of weeks ago, where what they're calling the equity metric, which is the percent of positive tests in our lowest income communities, our lowest HPI, Healthy Places Index communities. And that percent positivity is also beneath 5%, which is the level it needs to be for us to be able to move into orange. Next, please. So our anticipated tier level for this week is orange tier three. Again, that doesn't mean that we move into that tier. It means we would have to be in that tier. Our numbers have to correspond to that tier for at least two weeks before we would move into that tier and be allowed to take on the allowances and the openings that correspond to the orange tier. On October 19th yesterday, our adjusted case rate was 3.6. Needs to be below 3.9 to move into orange. Our overall test positivity was 1.8%, and the test positivity in the lowest HPI quartile equity metric was 2.7%. The October 20th, today's rates will be announced around noon today. The number of weeks we've been in red tiers, five, so the earliest we would potentially move into the orange tier, tier three, would be October 27th. And that is if it's confirmed today by the governor's announcement that we are in fact in orange for this week. And then again, on the 27th, if the same announcement is made, we would move into orange. Next, please. And this just reminds us that the different categories of different sectors and how open we might be is linked directly to our tier status. And if you look at tier two, what the activities that are allowed indoors are very similar to those that are allowed indoors in tier three, but the difference is the percent capacity. For example, restaurants are open at 25% capacity indoors in tier two, whereas they open at 50% capacity in tier three, and there are similar increases in the capacity indoors in other sectors as well between tier two and tier three. Next, please. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the Santa Fe City Schools Testing Drive that we organized over the past two weeks. We had been facing, as you know, important decisions about when and how to reopen schools safely across the county. One of the communities of greatest concern for us because of higher prevalence and higher burden has been parts of Santa Fe, especially the canal area due to low-income essential workers and living conditions that accelerate spread within households. We had at some, you know, at our highest, we had a percent positivity in the canal area of over 30% of people who were tested were infected with COVID-19 in July. And so the decision to reopen schools in that community was needed to be informed by a sense of where are we now in terms of our overall percent positivity? Our goal was to test at least 800 Santa Fe school-aged children between October 5th and October 16th. And the reason for that was to guide decision-making regarding timing of reopening schools and drive down case rates. And these are the results of that effort. So between October 5th and October 16th, we tested 4,355 Santa Fe residents with an overall percent positivity in that group of 1.7%, which is lower than it has been at any other time in the past three months. With percent of fell youth aged 19 and younger, which corresponds obviously to the age groups that would be coming back in the classroom-based learning, 965, so we exceeded our goal of 800, and the percent positivity in that group was 2.1%. And then when we organize it to the canal area, which was where we had the highest concerns based on historical rates, 678 total canal residents were tested with a percent positivity of 4.8, and among youth, 250 youth, a percent positivity of 4.9%. Next, please. Santa Fe has two zip codes, and we, this is the data that organizes it's by age group in those two different zip codes, 94901 and 94903. And it shows, you know, basically a very similar pattern of continuous progress in the percent positivity between July, August, September, and now through October. The results that we have available through mid-October here showing what was also reflected in the previous slide, which was a much lower percent positivity now. Next, please. This is a new tool that as we go to reopen schools, we're, you know, trying to make sure that as the Santa Fe testing driver reflects, take a data-based, evidence-based approach to this, and then share that information with the community for the best decision-making. This is a tool that's helping us see what's happening in our school community across the county. This is now available on our website, and it shows all the dots there are all schools in Marin County. The green circles reflect those schools that are open to some form of classroom-based learning. At least 10% of the students are back in classroom-based learning in those schools with the green dots. The schools that are the gray dots reflect schools that have not yet opened to classroom-based learning. On the upper left there, you see the total number of students between age five and age 19 in Marin County schools, and then the estimated total number of staff. And then the schools that have been are open for remote learning only is 59, and the schools that have opened to some form of classroom-based learning is 55. There are other features of this that can, I can't share with you because it's an interactive map, but you can also sort on the upper right, you could sort by private schools versus public schools, and the results will adjust automatically. So about half of the schools currently are open. Some of our largest public schools are not yet open, so there's a fewer percentage of students who are actually coming in to school currently. And on the right, Public Health will be updating this weekly, and it shows the number of cases that correspond to school environments. Starting there on the upper right with suspected in-school transmission. This is really an important factor to be following over time as we reopen schools, because obviously what the concern is that the schools themselves could potentially be environments of transmission within that setting. It's important to remember that just because a student or a staff member has COVID-19, it doesn't mean that the school itself is the source of that infection. In fact, the vast majority of cases in school-aged children are due to community transmission, either through a household member or acquired someplace outside of the school environment. So we'll be tracking that specifically. In Marin, we've had a total of three students diagnosed with COVID-19 since September 8th. These are all on this map here, and what we will be tracking prospectively are those schools that opened after we were in the red tier and able to open to classroom-based learning, or those schools that opened under the waiver previously when we were in the purple tier, starting on September 8th. We've had no cases among staff yet. Next, please. So now I'm going to talk briefly about elections. The first message is to vote. Next, please. The next message is to vote by mail. I'm tempted to stop there because that's overwhelmingly the message from a public health standpoint, but next, please. If you have to vote in person, there's, the elections board has done a lot to do it to make it as safe as it can be. So there are 29 in-person voting locations countywide. They can be found on the website. On November 3rd, all of those locations will be open from early morning into the evening, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then there's additional days prior to that where most of those locations are also open. So it's spread out over space and time to try and limit crowding. And those are the 29 locations across the county listed on the left there. And again, those are available on the website, and if you click on them, you'll see the address and the hours that they're open. Next, please. And these are some of the steps that the team has taken to make sure that those polling stations are as safe as they can be. They will be queuing outside. Again, the principle of outside is much safer than indoors across the board. Masks are required of both voters and poll workers. Six-foot spacing markers will control social distancing with clear signage. There'll be separate entrance and exit from the voting area. Plexiglass barriers between the voters and the poll workers. Adequate spacing between voting privacy booths. Poll workers will be sanitizing frequently touched surfaces, and there'll be clear signage. Next, please. So this is an important question for us. Just stepping back is we've seen significant progress. We had an outbreak, a lot of cases in July. July was a rough month for us. It coincided with the San Quentin outbreak. We saw the canal outbreak. We had several outbreaks happening simultaneously in our long-term care facilities. Our highest mortality rate was in July. We've seen significant progress since then. We remain vulnerable as a community. About 80 to 90% of our community, we would estimate, is still susceptible to COVID-19 infection, has no immunity, and there's no vaccine in the near future. We're looking at early 2021 for the vaccine arrival. So we need to really remember that as the virus is part of this community, we are vulnerable again to a second or third wave that could look a lot like or even be worse than what we experienced in July. And on the right here, you see what happened in the influenza pandemic of 1918, where there was a first wave and then a relaxation that led to a much larger second wave. And we're seeing now in other parts of the world and other parts of the country similar experiences where the case rates that are happening now are actually some of the highest case rates in some areas ever. And we want to protect ourselves against that, and the way to do that is to make sure that we don't have too much of our pandemic fatigue, especially as we reopen and remembering that the steps that we've taken to control the epidemic thus far are the same things we need to continue to do and really double down on. Next, please. And I'll end with this reminder, and we'll keep offering this reminder until through the flu season. This is the right time to get your flu shot, and they're being promoted widely throughout the community pharmacies and your medical provider. So please get your flu shot if you haven't done that yet. Next, please. So in summary, we're moving towards tier three, the orange tier. Our school community responded to the call to action. We had high testing rates when we invited the community to come and get tested. The results confirm progress, affirm the choice for classroom learning for the Santa Fe City School District. We remain vulnerable to slipping back. Indoor gatherings are the highest risk. We want people to vote by mail, if at all possible, and then possible, and to get your flu shot. Next, please. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Hey, before we go back to Matthew, Dr. Willis, could you just give your primer on Halloween and reminder on Halloween specifically, and the importance of following the guidance that you're putting out there?
Yeah, we issued Halloween-specific guidance that essentially boils down to two things. One is that the current bans on gatherings apply. So really, what's only allowed now for gathering socially is households. The new state guidance for social gatherings is similar to what we had released in terms of our social bubbles. The social bubbles guidance has been replaced by the state guidance for three households to be able to gather together, and that's really only three households. It's not extended family. And this is going to be an important message for as we come into the holiday season with not just Halloween, but Thanksgiving and the winter holidays. Three households are choosing to be, you know, joined in an ongoing way without a lot of other mixing. And when they do gather, it's outdoors with social distancing and facial covering. We know that as the weather gets colder, and it's, you know, there's a lot of Halloween traditions that we have where people gather together indoors. This is not the year to do that. We've already issued a recommendation, a strong recommendation against trick-or-treating, you know, conventional trick-or-treating where children would move through the neighborhood. House-to-house is not a safe practice this year, and unfortunately, I mean, I've got three kids, and they're devastated that we're not going to be able to trick-or-treat this year, but it's not a safe year to do that. So there's other forms of trick-or-treating that, you know, adoptions with cars, car parades, other ways of doing trick-or-treating that are safer. So our recommendation again is to limit social gatherings to the outdoors, to your network of three households at the most, and to find an alternative to trick-or-treating in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Matthew?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of minor revisions to our staff reports for items six and seven that you'll be hearing from later this morning. We did submit a revised staff report, and the revisions are based on the changes in the publication dates. So please consider the revised report when you consider those items. And then in the afternoon, the minutes read initially August 19th meeting, and it should be August 18th meeting. So just pointing out those minor corrections.
Okay, that's it? All right. Board members, questions for Dr. Willis? Supervisor Verdoni?
Matt, I think people may be wondering about shelter in place and who that applies to now as we open up things, and I thought it might be an opportunity for you to talk about that a little bit.
Shelter in place in terms of the public health order?
Yeah, who should be still sheltering in place and what members of our community still need to remember they're most vulnerable and just sort of repeat that message probably is what I'm looking for.
Yeah, right. Well, we know that, you know, Marin County, 95% of our deaths are people aged 65 or greater. And it's obviously one of the themes of the COVID-19 experience globally is the differential impact on older residents in particular. In Marin, we have an even exaggerated version of that. We've had, you know, of our 99 deaths, and 94 of them are in our older residents. So, you know, many of them are living in long-term care facilities, but the risk is shared across that age group. And I think if there's any single message in terms of who should be understanding their own risk in terms of their own behaviors, in terms of going out into the community, it is our older residents and residents with chronic conditions that put them at higher risk for bad outcomes should they become infected. When you're out in the community, you can't know who may be infectious. It's one of the messages, you know, one of the lessons that we've learned because of asymptomatic transmission. It's not easy to know who you may interact with, who may or may not be infected. And so if there is a community that should really think twice before venturing out, and when they do, to make sure that they're really practicing that physical distancing as much as possible, and avoid settings where it seems that people may not be adhering to those standards. It is those people that are at higher risk, people with chronic conditions, older residents. In the voting, you know, this is, there's also, I think, an association between older residents and, you know, a history and a tradition of voting in person. It's a ritual, and it's part of the feeling that's part of a democracy. But I think this is a year where forego that, especially if you're an older resident and vote by mail.
All right. Supervisor Connolly? Is it just me or are things freezing?
Thank you. Can you hear me? I think I'm frozen.
Supervisors, this is Alvaro from NTT. Audio continues to work. Video appears to be stuck at the moment. Supervisor, that appeared to be in an outage with Zoom that was momentary. It looks like everyone's rejoined.
Okay, so Damon, could you repeat your question? I lost you.
I didn't even ask it yet.
Sorry, I checked out. I didn't see anything for about 30 seconds there.
Okay, Supervisor Connolly?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Willis, as always, and really appreciate your focus on Santa Fe schools and the focus on increased testing there of both students and teachers. I think parents are paying close attention to that as well as the rest of the community. And your update on the number of staff and students tested, and the results are promising. Question is, is the testing for Santa Fe City Schools a one-time initiative, or is this an ongoing process over the next several months?
It was a one-time initiative to really determine what the baseline prevalence was in the community. We had a bias historically where the only children that were getting tested were children that have symptoms or children that were known to have a contact. So a son or daughter of an essential worker, it was not an uncommon dynamic. And so the test positivity rate among children, especially in the canal, was high but highly biased. And so this was really an effort to make sure that we had the data we needed to inform the decision regarding timing of reopening. And I think the intent of that really validated what our hypothesis was, was that if you look across the community, A, the percent positivity has decreased over time, but also as you look at a wider sample, you see there's a much, there's a lot less infection than it seems when you have that more biased approach. So this was really a one-time effort from a surveillance standpoint. We will still obviously continue to test widely. Staff needs to be tested on a monthly basis. So school staff is getting tested monthly. That's a recurrent expectation, and other healthcare providers have stepped up to make sure that that happens, including Kaiser. But for students, we're not planning to do widespread, repeated serial surveillance testing for students. For students, it'll be more based on symptoms and other circumstances.
And another question that's come up in the context of classrooms, but more generally as well. If you could speak to the topic of aerosol versus droplet transmission of COVID-19 and how that is playing out, what people need to be aware of?
Yeah, you know, since April, our approach to COVID-19 has really been based on the understanding that it was an airborne virus, and that's both droplets and aerosol. So the core of our strategies are really based on preventing what we know to be the dominant mode of transmission, which is airborne. Aerosol transmission and droplet transmission are both within that frame of airborne transmission. And so there's a, you know, the CDC has offered some clarity that we might have toggled a little bit more towards the proportional amount of cases that might be related to aerosol versus droplet, but they're still both airborne, and it really relates more to the take-home message there is the need for ventilation. I think if we step back and say, what does it mean if a greater proportion of cases are due to aerosolized transmission versus droplet, which really just has to do with the size of the particle and how long it hangs in the air, ventilation becomes more critical. And so when we're talking about, and one way to think about ventilation is just the number of times the air circulates in the environment that you're in. If you're outdoors, it's circulating continuously. That's why outdoors is so much safer. If you're in these super spreader events where, you know, some of the literature now where in a restaurant where it's poor ventilation and an individual is infectious to others, you aren't covering their faces, and you might see clusters of 10 to 15 cases that arrive out of one, you know, two-hour shared space event. It's an indoor space with poor ventilation. And that's, you know, I think that's the, one of the pieces of data that has helped us understand the potential role for increased role of aerosol transmission. We've worked with our schools to make sure that the classrooms are well-ventilated. The good news is that opening windows, even three inches, if there are several windows opening just a bit, actually increases ventilation significantly. We're really looking for an exchange of about five times of the full volume of air of that space, whether it's a room or a classroom or an auditorium, whatever it is, that full volume of air has to exchange at least five times to be adequate ventilation. And that's not hard to achieve with keeping windows open even partially. And then additional value, if there's a device within the room that actually increases air exchange, and we recommend that schools have portable air exchange filters as well.
Okay, yes, Supervisor Arnold, go ahead. Hit your mute button. Get your, hit your mute button.
I can't hear you yet.
There. I was speaking to a constituent last night about just, you know, checking in to see how she's doing. That was Mary Jane Burke, the superintendent of schools. And I just want to share a couple of sentences that she met me, that she sent me. Want you to know that your team, the public schools team, and then she lists Matt, Lisa, and Woody, could not be more professional, supportive, with an incredible can-do attitude with each and every interaction, which at times occurs multiple times a day and night. I could go on and on, but they are truly amazing and exemplary partners in this effort. So take that for the day.
Thank you. Well, right back at you and Mary Jane Burke. I mean, this, it's really been an amazing partnership. And it's built on a partnership between MCUE and public health that goes back. I started as health officer eight years ago. We really do recognize schools as being hubs of health and not just learning. And there's a shared sentiment there that I think has been an important part of our progress in reopening schools as safely and as quickly as we can. Thanks.